To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it spans, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody.
Yep. Are you guys on there? You like?
Yep.
All right, gentlemen, we have one thing we need to add to the agenda. It's DD six main and branch B authorized chairman to sign contract. We need to make that amendment to the-
Amendment to the base agenda.
We can do that by just approving the amended agenda.
No, I think we should do approve the amended agenda.
A second. First and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, approve the minutes from April tenth.
I've looked through them earlier. Personally did not see anything out of line, so I'll make a motion to take through the minutes.
Okay. First and second, Dave, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. General public concerns.
I get concerned that-
Say. Say. Be nice.
Okay, sounds like we have none. Yep, we got some certificates for employees.
They want to get back to work?
All right, Mary Bethel. We have a certificate for recognition of fifteen years. And Christine Kleist. We have one for thirty years. Thank you very much for your years of service.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Michelle?
Yes.
You're up next.
All right. I wasn't quite sure how you want me to do this. Do you want me to kind of talk a little bit about building families first and then read approximately?
Yeah, probably.
Okay. Um, well, good morning. Hi. Um, my name is Michelle Walters and I'm the director for Building Families.
You can sit if you want to.
Yeah, if you want to, you can sit up here.
Sure.
That way it might cure you better, too.
All right, cool. Uh, I'm the director for Building Families and, um, I have three supervisors here who have served on our board at some point or another and Eric currently serves on our board. And, um, one of the coalitions that we're a part of or the councils that we're a part of is the Prevent Child Abuse Council, uh, which serves Hamilton, Humboldt and Wright Counties. Humboldt is very fortunate. We have a couple of programs that we're able to offer and get funds for through the Prevent Child Abuse Iowa Council, or Prevent Child Abuse Iowa Grant. Um, and we support, or that grant supports the Take a Break Program, which is only available in Humboldt County, where parents can get ten free hours a month to just have a break from their kids. I mean, all of you, I'm assuming have had parent, or have been a parent or have had kids around you, um, sometimes you just need a break, whether it's to go to the grocery store, to the doctor's office, you don't like your kids jumping on you while you're trying to have your appointment. Um, that service is what that is available for and it's only in Humboldt County. And then we also have the permit, or the Parent Connection Program, which offers individualized and group-based parent classes for parents, so that we can teach parents how to be more positive parents rather than always focusing on negative or, um, resort to spanking or other forms of punishment for their kids. We take a look at how do we positively influence kids to, to do what we want them to do. Uh, so those are the two main programs. Um, for April, um, April is, has been kind of deemed, uh, Prevent Child Abuse Awareness Month, so I'm here today to ask the Board of Supervisors, Supervisors to approve a proclamation and declare April, um, Child Abuse Prevention Month for Humboldt County. So, if you, do you want me to go ahead and read it?
Sure.
Okay. So, um, whereas our children are, are our most valuable resource and will shape the future of Humboldt County, whereas child abuse and neglect directly harms children and increases the likelihood of long-term physical and mental health problems, alcohol and substance abuse, continued family violence and criminal behavior, whereas children suffering from child abuse are more likely to engage in risky behavior, perform poorly in school, develop unhealthy relationships, suffer from depression, attempt suicide and express violent aggression and, whereas only one dollar is spent on preventing child abuse in Iowa for every fifty dollars spent on treating it. And whereas Iowa is leading research efforts to better understand the negative long-term outcomes of child abuse and neglect among adults throughout, through the Adverse Childhood Experiences Study, which shows that poor physical health, mental health and financial health in adulthood is attributed to adverse experiences in childhood, including abuse and neglect. And whereas the risk of child abuse is reduced through strong social supports for adults and children, and whereas research shows that the presence of one caring relationship in a child's life mitigates negative outcomes and reduces risk factors resulting in better physical health, mental health and financial health. And whereas positive social supports for children and adults are key factors to improving social well-being in Iowa and, whereas the Connections Matter Initiative, supported by Building Families and the Hamilton Humboldt and Wright County Prevent Child Abuse Council, promotes the development of positive social supports and communicates the healing power of relationships and children's development and the community's growth. And now therefore-
Ira Peterson.
Do hereby proclaim April as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Humboldt County and urge all citizens, uh, in our community to increase their participation in building caring connections with families, thereby preventing child abuse and strengthening the community in which we live. And then, so then Humboldt County, uh, in testimony whereof, Rick Peterson has, uh, hereunto set his hand and cause to be affixed the great seal of Dakota City in Humboldt County, Iowa on this, the seventeenth of April, two thousand seventeen.
Very good.
Um, so if that is something that the board supports, I am happy to, to have that available.
Did you have to work with him a long time for his-
I picked up with that in a hurry.
I worked with Eric.
Yes, I think the board is in very much a support-
Thank you.
-of making this Child Abuse Prevention Month.
Need a motion to say-
I think we do.
I would make the motion to officially prove April as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Humboldt County. A second.
A first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, that's for thank you.
There's two events happening in Humboldt that are also taking place throughout the month of April. One is pinwheels are being sold at Hy-Vee, um, to help support the Take a Break Program and the Parent Connection Program. And then there's a scavenger hunt that's free for families, for kids under the age of ten to come. They can get free books. Um, there's a, a light snack provided, right? Yep, Public Health is helping with the planning of that and, um, it's taking place at the Legion on April, um, twenty ninth, uh, sorry, from ten to noon. So, um, I would encourage all families to come down and, and participate and hang out. It's a good event and we look forward to seeing everybody there. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'll give this to you. I just put it on a piece of cardboard there, or a-
Okay.
-little bit stiffer paper. And thank you, everybody, for all your support.
All right. Okay. Should we go on and do, um, I guess really we don't have nothing on schedule, period, so everything here is, just kind of flows. Should go into drainage and get that done first.
Works. I'd make the motion to go into drainage.
Second, that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
You'll have to find your picture this morning.
Are you gonna take a picture? Okay.
That's why I brought it earlier on. I lost it again already. You put it back in your bag.
Oh, is that where I put it?
Yeah. You look good right now.
Yes, it does, yep. Okay. Perfect. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, definitely.
Eric, you want to be in this picture?
Yeah.
You're on board, yeah.
Well, everybody.
Eric? Should we just stand behind him? Let's go over there and stand behind him. Yeah. I just told Michelle she should, she could come.
Are you gonna take a picture for us? Is that cool, Jim?
Oh, yeah.
Awesome. Thank you.
I hope you do that.
I'm sorry. Sorry.
Why the interruption?
I think Michelle can.
Like you're hard looking and I am.
You are?
Yeah. All right. Nice smile, ready? One, two, three. Okay, very good. Want me to take another one?
Sounds like more range on the road.
Yeah.
Get all that money falling out of your pocket there.
You get this right there. Go out of your pocket.
Oh, yeah. Giving you guys money. Sounds like you need it.
Sorry.
Thank you.
I can.
Yeah.
Does it say your name on it? You can find your car?
Oh, I should have. This is expensive, huh?
If you weren't driving a Maserati, it would-
Oh, yeah.
I'm gonna save me eight dollars for the golf cart. No.
What?
Golf cart. You thought saving eight dollars for that.
Maybe you left people hooked up.
That's because you're high risk.
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm just-
They have to pass that in.
I've got an objection.
Registration file.
I'll just make note of this, but I gotta-
Drive my honey wagon, didn't talk to anything. I'm just a high-risk man.
Exactly.
That's how it works, though.
Okay, which one do you want to do first? Well, what is- We, we got, uh, DD six on the top of the list. Okay. Um, that one's just authorizing to sign the contract? Yeah. We, we're in drainage. We have, uh, DD six main, branch B authorized chairman to sign the contract. I need a motion to that effect.
I would so move to authorize chairman to sign the contract.
Number first. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, now we'll go down. We've got lateral DD two, excuse me, DD two lateral improvements. Accept annexation report and set hearing date. What I just passed out is the annexation report and what this does, it starts the timing on, uh, the hearing for annexation. Uh, when you're closing those two ag drainage wells, uh, some of the portions, portions of that area was not in DD two boundary originally. So, we need to get those, those, uh, areas into the boundary, um, and that's what this report will do.
Was this, refresh my memory, says Pipers?
No, this is the one to the west of Pipers. Um, we're gonna be talking about Pipers a little bit after this, uh, but no, this is not.
So, is the red designated area, what, being annexed?
Yes, correct. Yep, that gives you a good picture of what's going on and then the report spells out the acres, uh, in each tract, uh, that will be added. Between a hundred and fifty and two hundred acres. Um, and like I say, that, that allows you to give them an alternate outlet when they close the ag wells. And that's the one that Mansky's given the estimate for and worked through some of those details, so. He asked that you set a hearing date and this has to be one of those that are at least forty days.
So, forty?
I guess I didn't look at it. I didn't look at it.
Not in the-
Let's see what it says. One, two, three.
It'll be longer than May.
Twenty ninth, yeah.
Those are April seventeenth.
What is the-
You're counting way off. Maybe I'm a month or two behind.
If I looked right, it's May twenty ninth. Three, four, five.
Says it closed out, the court house is closed on May twenty ninth.
Oh, it's Memorial Day, I didn't look at that. Mm-hmm.
Somebody's gonna be gone.
You got me Tuesday? Go to the ball and wait.
Or June fifth. June fifth.
June fifth looks good. Is it too soon, too late?
No, that's, that's fine. That's just a little over the time and- Yeah. Okay, so we need a motion to set the, uh, annexation date and time.
I knew we accept the annexation report and set the hearing date for March fifth, or June fifth? And what, what time do I do it? Nine o'clock? Nine o'clock.
Okay, a motion for nine o'clock on June fifth for the annexation.
Second, that.
Second from Eric. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we dropped down to the same DD two, but this is lateral M authorized preliminary engineering report. I'm leaving it classified or labeled lateral M because I talked to Bob Nellis, who's talking to Louise Piper. Um, they're talking that they'd like to have this as a county lateral so that it's, it takes care of everything. It determines who pays what future maintenance would be, um, by the drainage district that they'd be paying, but, but they go through the channels for that, so. Um, in talking to Bob Nellis, the tenant, um, I asked about wetlands and he talked to Lois and got permission for them to release her wetland determination to us. There are no farmed wetlands, so there's nothing there to hold that up. Um, she's submitted a petition, submitted a check. Um, it's basically ready for us to do a preliminary engineering report and get that filed. And we do the same kind of thing. I think there's a little piece of ground with hers. Most of hers is in the district already, but I believe that farm just to the north will have a corner of that coming in also. So, we'd file an annexation report right away on that, probably within a couple, three weeks. Start that process rolling. So, we could end up with both of those laterals under construction basically at the same time, pretty much. But I guess we're looking for authorization to proceed with it based on her petition and check that she submitted. Yeah, well, she was at a twenty-five hundred dollar bond. That'll cover the annexation and preliminary engineering report very easily. Okay.
I would make the motion to authorize preparation of preliminary engineering report.
I have a first, Mary.
A second.
Second by Bruce. Any more discussion? Bob?
Is all this ground already in DD two? Hundred percent of this Piper ground?
No. He just said there's a ten acre.
So, you're gonna have to annex that in on top of it?
A little bit. There's, there's just a little bit up in the corner. I should have wrote on the overall maps. I think the section to the north is gonna get just four or five acres in the corner that appears to come to the south, southwest. Um, that looks like all we'll have to annex. So, we'll get that report here in a couple of weeks.
Well, at one point in time, we thought about having an annexation fee to join the district that already has a drainage district in place. Has that ever come about, happened in that or not?
Here's what's happening with these. These used the ag drainage wells previously, so they would have not been using DD two prior to this. If they had been using DD two as an outlet previously, yes, we'd probably recommend that they pay something, but since they hadn't been using it previously, um, typically you don't ask them to pay because it's hard to prove benefit. Past benefit because they weren't using it. Anything coming up? Yes, they would be part of, but there isn't gonna be very much. Spot clean outlets. I don't know what else, but-
Yeah, I-
Oh, yeah, that's-
I guess it's- It's a good point. You know, the forefathers had to pay to make that ditch all the way through there and they had to pay it all a hundred percent. You're putting new people into there without having to have that extra fee somewhere in their past.
See, that's, and we've asked, I've asked drainage attorneys about it and I, that's it, I should write that down and ask because I got a meeting this morning with one, but, um, if they were not getting any benefit previously, they recommended not trying to charge for that. Um, I know exactly what you're saying, because, yeah, that ditch was done by other people and now they're going to be using it, so.
I had a phone call this morning, also a question, same.
Um- And I spoke with the drainage attorney about this a month ago and asked him that same question and he told me, being that they were using alternative drainage before, now that they have no choice, that's part of it. They didn't have the option, they really didn't have the option to, at the time when DD two was formed, to say, something different. That was his-
A lot of times they did have the option, the problem was they didn't want to join in because they didn't want to spend the extra money to do it.
That's a possibility, too. Yeah, some of that. Yeah. But that, that's what this thing, that they're using alternative drainage and now that it's being closed. Yeah. That, that's what I've gotten from them, too. Right or wrong, that's what they're saying. And, uh, what, what kind of fee would you determine? That'd be very difficult. And when they do, when they do go for back fees, there's no allowance for inflation, so it might be fifty dollars or a hundred dollars. It's, I think that's maybe a weakness in the code.
Is that the point?
Yeah, yeah. Because- We checked it out. Yeah. Any other more? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Anything else in drainage we need to discuss?
Bruce and I talked a little bit about Harlan Schultz's ag drainage well. Um, I'm gonna be meeting with him either yet this morning or early this afternoon. I had gone through and, and done an estimate for closing that well out there, uh, so I'm gonna go over that with him. He's got some things to think about because if it's going to be a district improvement, he probably will need a preliminary engineering report, uh, classification and all of those things, and we can come up with a number for that very easily. Uh, if he's just gonna do it private, Mike Borland, I think I mentioned to you the other day, has agreed that we could give them an estimate for going to the closer, uh, lateral, which is already sized big enough, or going to the east to the other lateral, which has to be upsized. And they give them seventy-five percent of the lesser of those two, which would be the closer one. But I, I mentioned to Bruce, if they do this and get the grant, go to the close one, it's only averages a hundred and twenty-nine dollars an acre, you know, to be closed. So, he's got some things to think about. I'm gonna sit with him and go through this, through his options, see what he has for questions, um, let him think about it. Next time I'm down, maybe he'll be ready to try and make a decision on how he wants to go on it, so. I'll be meeting with him here after this.
I think the good news is it's another one of the people that were out at the meeting in Oxbow that has moved forward-
Yeah.
-and hopefully making decision towards getting rid of another one of the ag green wells that are-
Yes.
Seem to have an abundance of.
Um, I guess that's all I had down there with Schultz. Any other issues with the board?
We got any updates in the pond, or we?
Um, yes and no. It were, looks like that we're going to have that worked out. Uh, I've met with Mark Dickey, um, and his only hangup is, um, that if it takes longer, um, he wants to be sure he can work that out with the guy renting some of his ground because we're gonna be taking one of the knobs off to do the dam. So, it's, looks to me like it's gonna be under contract here in the next two, three weeks, but completion won't be till sometime in August. And it will be part of the project and it will get three-fourths grant money, so. It's, it's a step at a time and it's all forward yet, um, the way it looks, so. I'll, I'll bring you an update again as soon as we get that official. They would not sign the change order, the contractor, Denver, because of the completion date, and that's what I'm working through.
Too soon.
Too soon. And I understand that, you know, everybody's doing their tiling and then they got, jumping into other things, so, um, that's, that was their only hangup, so that's why I think it's gonna go forward. And, and Mark, I approached Mark because it was his situation with the renting that I thought could be a hangup and he's working through that.
But we did, we did, you did get that seeded on the top side of that.
Yes, it's seeded. I was hoping to come that way.
We gotta see if it's green enough.
Yeah, I'm gonna go by there now when I go over to Pocahontas, but, um, yeah, yeah, it's seeded.
Good.
The weather should have been good.
Perfect for it.
Yeah, should have been ideal. Some rain, but not heavy. We should see growth in days, I think.
I got, I'm that same deal. We're looking at putting a new grate over that. Well, how big a hole is that? Four by four? Is it six by six?
At least four.
Yeah, at least four by four. Yeah. Talking with Paul out there, he was more in favor of something more open with just bars, but that's gonna let a lot, let a lot of trash through. I didn't know if we should have something with more of a-
And Paul and I talked about that and after-
Did he talk to you?
Yes, and I think probably you should look at a couple of things. I, they use just a rail system and that's more of a safety thing.
Yeah.
Like if you put a grate on it and it's plugged and somebody goes to clear it, you clear it, it could suck you right in. So, a rail around it, probably just with two pipe, one about belt height and the one lower, uh, but then some kind of grate over it to stop the debris, so. Um, whether they weld it or someone else does, or, um, yeah. I think you should have not real small openings or to plug too easy.
Six inch?
Yeah, that's what we've done on, on our big intakes. The thirty-six inch diameter ones, we have them weld rebar, uh, with six inch openings, so.
Well, we'll come up with something.
There you go. Anything else? All right, sounds like we can get a motion to go out of drainage.
I move to go out of drainage?
Number first.
Aye.
Second by Dave. All in favor?
Aye.
We're out of drainage. Done with drainage before nine o'clock. I know. Good deal. Fisher Day. Yeah, thank you.
He flagged them all. Three copies.
So, you did need to hold the harness in there?
Yes, I did. Yep. And he said, just let him know, he's gonna be tinkering with stuff around home. Because I told him if it went quick this morning, we could meet right after this, or it'd be early this afternoon, so. I'll probably call him right now.
We try to put some type of lags into that concrete. That concrete looks like it's about four inches, four to six inches.
Why?
Lags or something into that concrete, it'll probably bust the concrete all right.
I was thinking something more that would just set over it with some pins that go down inside of it so it don't move off.
Happen for it.
And then shape of a pyramid type thing. Yeah. You gotta go all that way.
I don't think you're even.
It's not his property.
Okay, all right. We have approved request for FMLA leave.
Okay, as you are aware, we have an employee who had a serious car accident.
Yeah.
She's applied for family leave. I can pass around the application, but I can make copies for you because it's confidential simply.
Okay. But that normally is what? Up to eight, up to twelve weeks? Eighteen weeks? Twelve weeks?
Twelve weeks, yep.
And the rules of Family Medical Leave Act, they, they don't get to pay, but they continue their insurance, right? No, you get one or the other, which is?
They have to use their sick leave first and they get paid while they're going and their insurance is covered.
Okay.
And there's adequate insurance to cover, or sick leave to cover.
All right.
Shouldn't be an issue.
I move your request for, for the Make a Leave Act for the employee that was accidentally injured in a car wreck.
I would second the motion. I would second the motion.
Okay, we got a first and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we have the acceptance place in file sheriff's quarterly report for the quarter ending March thirty-first.
Dean didn't mention anything in particular about his report that he wanted to point out, so...
Yes, I move accept the quarterly report from the sheriff for January one of March thirty-one, two thousand seventeen.
I would second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Approved hire of animal control officer.
I want you to sign our copy of this over here, so that we have one signed.
I believe we only had one applicant for that?
Yes, we did. And it brought to mind, maybe we want the county attorney draw out some kind of a contract for them to sign. We probably should, since this isn't a regular employee, you know, that just comes on, has a regular salary. Maybe we should have some wording in there, so what that person...
Probably should have something in writing.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, John. I just thought about that in a second. The only person done that applied was Mary Hanson. She lives out near Hardy. Dean had checked, did a background check for us, and said that there was nothing that came up. He does, she does live somewhere near Dean. Said she's a good neighbor, and...
Okay.
That's the N, or one?
Yeah.
I think she had a good resume.
Yeah, we saw that earlier.
Yeah.
Looked very good, actually.
Yes, it did.
You said M-E-R-R-I?
M-E-R-R-I. And Hanson with an N. That's the N. And then this one, I sent a note off to Travis, and said that we were doing our side of this today. I said to let him know when we have contracts.
And they'll have to sign off also.
Yeah, that they would.
Sign on, I guess it would be.
Since they're going to be doing humble...
Okay, can...
Do we need to approve that before you get the contract? Would you approve the hiring?
We'll approve the contract when he brings it back. Yeah, approve the hire.
Will you approve the hiring right now?
Yeah.
I would make a motion to approve the hiring of Mary Hanson as animal control officer?
All right, you have a first.
I have a second.
I have a second from Dave. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, authorized chairman to sign the annual cannon certificate.
Every year we have to certify to the government that our cannon is still out here in good repair. We know that we'll have it painted this year. I talked again to Michael Heim, and he said he was gonna bring me over some paint swatches. So let me try to figure out which one best. There's so many kinds of green, and you wanna make sure you get army green.
How often do they paint that?
We've never painted it.
I was gonna say...
Oh, you've never painted it, okay, so it's...
It's not an annual event.
Not a very ongoing thing.
No, but it does look pretty bad.
So it requires a letter from us and an actual certification form that we have to send in. And a picture, so I'll get a picture of it.
After it's painted, or before?
It has to be when that's going to be done. So they'll see it now, and then I'll maybe I'll code in, code in with it that we are...
All right.
I have a motion to authorize Rick to sign the annual cannon certificate.
You have a first.
I would second that one.
Second by Eric. Any more discussion?
It's really important, because you have to have it notarized even.
I see that.
I think we should get a picture with you and the cannon.
Yeah.
Should we put a paintbrush in his hand, too? Or write things?
There we are.
It just draws attention. Every now and then, you know, we'll go by on the weekend, and there'll be a family standing up there looking at it.
Taking a picture or something, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, um, did we vote on that?
No.
Nope, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay.
We have copies for the press, and they want copies for the press, yeah.
I got one somebody to handle, right?
This is Paul out here.
Cannon, cannon.
We can run it all.
Welcome back, Bob.
Very good.
Two white loads in here. Two orders of business this morning, and one possible order. Approved local, excuse me, approved load postings for secondary road structures. And I know we sent you a small map, and I got larger ones available, so you can see a little bit better. We have recommendations to post some of these structures, and they mainly come from our SU loads. SU four truck is what controls. I don't know how many I grabbed here. You can see that. I'll, uh, let's go back. The SU truck is, uh, this is just a DOT brochure that I printed. The SU four is like a dump truck that has a cheater, a cheater axle in front, in front of the tandems. The SU four, SU five would be then, two more, five axles. SU six and SU seven would be similarly. We have a lot of SU fours out there. Cement trucks with the cheater in the back are another, another common one. We're seeing tenders, we're seeing refined fuel trucks. We're seeing a lot of things that have the close coupled loads that's approved by federal highway, but does not work well on some of our structures. We have two, four, six, eight, ten structures that are affected by these SU ratings. Three of them, we can post for one lane traffic, I believe. Otherwise, we can load rate them also. We've briefly discussed this in work session before with you. Otherwise, there's a half a dozen or so that need to be posted. Something in the, as a gross posting of like a twenty ton, in these cases twenty-one, twenty-three, twenty-six, which I'd recommend they all be twenty for simplicity. And that would be a gross posting for anything, any vehicle crossing that bridge. Otherwise, we could go with the triple sign posting that you're familiar with, that's on that brochure. That's got the straight truck on top, then a standard semi is the middle posting, and then a double bottom is the bottom one. And those could be, as you can see in these charts, like a twenty-one for the tandem or the SU, and then a forty and a forty. Much of them, several of these are all legal for a standard semi, but are not legal for anything with the close coupled loads. And thus, the confusion, and thus the difficulty. But the time has come when we better get something out there. I wanna get something before you for feedback. We have most of gross loading. We have one bridge in the county right now that's posted as twenty-five ton legal, legal, and that's bridge number forty-four, just northwest of Rutland. In other words, any farm implement, or anything that doesn't meet a semi or a double bottom trailer. The double bottom trailer is what you usually see on an interstate system. Don't see a lot of it around here where they're a truck pulling another truck. Yep. And it's not even a pup necessarily, it's the, oh, I thought I had a picture of...
It's in that Eric picture there.
Oh, yeah, the, yeah.
Like the FedEx?
Like the FedEx, where they're pulling the two, one in front of the other. That's the bottom one on that triple. And I bet if we quizzed ten people out in the country that saw that sign, what percentage of them would know what it meant? And thus, thus we, we need to post these. The first phase of our load ratings was required to do these three span timber bridges. The next ones to come would be the slabs and the more, the newer type structures. I don't think will be impacted as deeply as these. But these close coupled loads are really hard on these structures, the compact load that's not well distributed. And, and there's, what we have, then is a map, and it's got the blue, the blue dots mark the distribution of these bridges that are affected by your chart here. And, and how to post them, and what should be posted.
Your recommendation, you're twenty on all of them?
Well, I mean...
Or whatever the lowest rating is.
Well, and, and most of them are twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-six, twenty-one, twenty-three. I would pick a, a common round number, and I would say twenty would be what makes sense to post if we're gonna go with a gross posting. Otherwise, again, my fear is if we would go with a triple sign with a twenty-one, forty, forty, and I'm driving down the road with the tractor and two wagons, which one do I meet? And you meet the twenty-one ton. That's what you meet. All ag equipment is not exempt from load postings. And I'm suggesting we also go to all vehicle signs. At one point, we didn't put all vehicle signs on. It's recommended by enforcement and the courts. But to me, all vehicles was confusing. The last time we talked about this, maybe ten years ago, because, Mr. Chairman, is your tractor a vehicle, or isn't it?
I'd say it isn't.
But legally, it is.
Legally, it is.
So it applies, it's all vehicles. And then at the time, when you read the sign, all vehicles, well, I'm driving a tractor, it's not a vehicle, so that must not mean it applies. Wrong. Point is, we have to post and try to keep this simple on one hand, because as soon as confusion reigns, we just as well not post.
It used to be a speed limit on those vehicle signs? Anything that goes more than twenty-five miles an hour, didn't have to be posted? I don't know, I just...
In the bottom on these pictures, I mean, it's a recommended, or it can be. I mean, you can go, some of the other states do something like that. How do you like to read something like that going seventy mile an hour, or fifty-five?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think the idea is just keeping it simple, and, you know, post a twenty-ton, all vehicles.
I like that, but you're gonna have complaints, and we have some areas that are gonna be restricted. And that's what, yeah, we know that.
That forty-four bridge over there that you mentioned, that is a real booger because of the fact farmers bringing stuff into Rutland.
Right. The semis, the semis are legal on it.
Yeah.
Semis are legal, but anything that's closer coupled than the spread of your...
Right.
Of the semi is, is, should be down to that smallest rating on the sign.
Right.
Well, yeah. Really, one of them that is on a Class C road, we talked briefly on. That was originally presented to us by Eddie Shelgren a number of years ago, and we made it a Class C. It's a gated bridge. That is included with this, down to twenty-four ton. It does not, it's legal for anything other than the SUs. But so are the other ones.
That'd be number forty-nine, right?
Um, yeah, excuse me, I didn't tell you that. Forty-nine's on a stub road, it's a level C, it's gated. Should that have any special sign treatments? Again, once you have the gate open, you have anybody driving down there that's delivering any kind of commodity or whatever.
The liability there, okay, if you don't post it.
Right. Well, we're required on a B or C to post bridges, and that's, that's about it. Post bridges is adequate, and, and the, and the front sign says level B minimum, excuse me, level C minimum maintenance, enter at your own risk. But we're still obligated to post the structure.
Okay. Any, what are the discussion here on this?
Lower, you know, down to that twenty-ton minimum. Where would that really impact anything then? I mean, which, that one, is it, you know, would it maybe be too low? Is there, I guess that's...
Well, if you're jumping from twenty-four ton down to twenty, it doesn't make a whole lot of difference, because...
And I understand the short coupled thing, so maybe at twenty, it discourages some of those things that are the toughest.
It might. It also protects the county a little better. So the guy can't say, geez, I was confused.
But I mean, so the, other than that, which is understandable, but the semis, none of it more than twenty really impacts access for any...
Oh, yeah, it does.
It does, that's...
I mean, if we posted it at twenty, no longer are you hauling a semi load of corn to Bodyle, for instance, on this road with a twenty-ton bridge?
That's my question.
Yep, but they won't with a twenty-four ton either.
No.
You know, that's what we're looking at, the ones that are from twenty, was it twenty-six, twenty-four, twenty-one?
Yeah, you have them, I just passed it.
Yeah, I don't have that sheet, but...
Well, that's my concern, are we gonna bottleneck something somewhere?
In reality, it's the twenty-ton catches the tractor, the eighty-four-hundred T or whatever that weighs over twenty thousand already. Or, that's the ten ton, excuse me. I'm a, forty thousand pounds is what we're talking about at twenty ton. And I was just doing the math at ten. But it catches anything that weighs forty thousand and more, shouldn't pass it.
Right. But what, yeah, what is that? Is that screwing up your semis, your double wagon tracks?
Load of corn.
Yeah.
You're gonna, you're gonna go round the horn with anything of any weight.
Seven hundred bushel of corn.
Right.
That's forty-two thousand pounds.
Right.
Not counting the wagon.
Right.
So, but I think what he's asking for is, this group of bridges are rated. I mean, they come out and inspect them, and said they're rated at twenty-six, twenty-six ton.
Right.
Do we, do we get different signs for a twenty-six ton, and then different signs for a twenty-four ton, and different signs for a twenty-one ton? Or do we just list them all as a twenty ton? Isn't that what you're asking for?
Well, in, in reality, we have a choice, too, to, to post with the gross posting or the triple truck sign. I mean, the gross posting, again, we could go with the weight limit sign with the three vehicles. The bottom one applies to all the ag equipment and just a straight truck. The middle one is a semi, and the bottom is your FedEx truck pulling the trailer behind it. Again, with ours, when, when we ask that sign versus just a weight limit sign, which one does a farmer apply? If you're hauling two loads of corn down the road, and you see this sign...
It looks to me like it's the bottom one.
Yeah, it looks like the bottom one.
But it's not.
But it's not, it's the top one.
I know, but that's the problem.
And that's the problem. And I think Eric's question is, if you're a semi driver, and it was eight, twelve, and sixteen, which makes little or difference, I don't know why you'd even post it. But ours would be twenty-four, legal and legal. If you were a semi, you could be the eighty thousand on the bridge that says twenty-four, forty, and forty. That's forty tons, eighty thousand. So if you were eighty thousand with a semi, and you did that three sign posting, you're legal. But you're not legal with a tractor to that forty thousand. You're only to the twenty-one thousand or whatever, twenty-one or twenty thousand or whatever. And counties do it differently. Some try to post axle ratings, and some get so confusing that nobody knows what it means. And if you got a real confusing sign, you just well not put it up, because if there's ever a problem or anything where you take confusion into court, you don't have a, the chances of enforcement, even if you did have a problem. And then the reason we're posting is to ensure that we have a safe structure for the traveling public. And simplicity is good, but simplicity is also restrictive here. If you're spread out, you're all right. If you're close coupled, you're not.
Yeah, well, that's my, you know...
A combine.
Yeah.
Is close coupled.
Well, the other thing is, is these signs have to be far enough away from the bridge.
So they have an option.
So they're not turning it back, two way, up a road.
You gotta be able to get out of there.
No, we, we post, most of these have four signs for each posting. It's the last intersecting road prior to it, and then right at the bridge at both sides. Unless the bridge is right near an intersection, we have four for every. It says, it's a twenty-ton bridge, three-quarter mile ahead. And then it'd say all vehicles on the bottom, if we added that. That's a fifty dollar question, just to add the all vehicles to every sign we have out there.
Well, the other side of the coin is, and on the short bridge, they think twenty ton, well, my whole truck can't be on the bridge at the same time.
And the problem is...
The difference is still your gross weight when you get pulled over.
Well, in reality, some of the high timber backwalls were the backwalls issue. It's, it's the weight of the, on either side of the bridge pushing on that back wall of soil. So no, you're not, in some cases, that argument has some legitimacy. But we have so many different combinations of loads and different implements of husbandry, different kinds of semi, different kind of traffic here that you cannot physically post...
For everything.
For everything.
Shows me a lot of credibility to have a uniform. What's an extra three or four thousand pounds, not gonna make, not gonna inhibit, bring many people to travel.
The bottom end of this isn't questioned, it's whether or not we put the, you know, and again, everybody that sees the double trailer thinks that's automatically a tractor and, an ag tractor and another wagon.
Or two wagons.
Or two wagons. And it's not, and that's, anybody with a CMV should know what that sign means. But anybody else may or may not know what it is. When's the last time I've taken a driving test? Well, happened to be about eight years ago, when I, my license laps. But the rest of you, when, when did you take a test to try to figure out?
Yeah, what those signs are.
And you don't drive the truck per se, so you don't think about it. You drive, you drive the tractor with two wagons.
Yeah. Doesn't pertain to me. You know, that's the way some things look at it.
I was trying to get the, are we lowering anything that has an impact on major, that somebody's going across with a tractor and two wagons? I was trying to get the, are we lowering anything that has had an impact on major, that, that somebody's going across with a tractor and two wagons? That we're gonna lower it enough where it's gonna make them go around the, it, it, on some of these?
Oh, yeah. I hope so.
I don't think they have any choice.
You don't have any choice though, really.
They've dropped enough that it's necessary.
Most of these are, most of these three spans have been posted at ninety-six thousand, uh, to now, so they're gonna go from forty-eight to twenty ton.
So that's gonna cause an uproar in certain spots, I'm sure.
Yeah, you can see by the circles and where it's gonna be a problem.
We really don't have any choice.
Our choice is what kind of sign, this is really the choice. And if we're gonna put the triple truck sign, we need to order the signs. If we're doing gross posting, I think we got, uh, enough signs or we only have to order a few.
Hundred dollars a crack probably.
Yeah, something like that, they're under a hundred, 'cause they're engineering grade.
Like this number forty-four, which is on the, let's see...
On the Rutland Blacktop.
Yeah, is that one of those that can be a one lane?
No, no, that one's already been posted for a number of years and we posted it as twenty-five legal, legal at the time, knowing full well that a lot of semi traffic uses that route. The semis are legal, but it's the close coupled loads that get us. And again, yeah, that's the only exception that we posted, uh, that got hammered on its rating. It rated out well for something that was spanning the bridge and, and, uh, 'cause it's concrete of Buckmans and whatever, uh...
I would say that one probably gets hammered in the fall when Rutland has a whole lot of, uh, wet corn and they're trying to transport it over to, to roll.
Yeah.
Put it through the dryer and it's a lot quicker to run out that way than take the highway.
And go on the other way.
The blue ones are the ones that are in question today. The rest of the postings have been in place and will remain in place. Uh, um, we have dropped a few off, I mean, we keep replacing them and drop these load rated ones off, so, uh, that's, that's where we're at with it at this point. And that's why you don't see any posting number on the blue. This is just to illustrate what we have and where we, we will be posting. And I, and we've known that nineteen, late fifties and sixties and early seventies, all these three span wooden structures have, the clock is ticking.
Yeah, their, their, they've already exceeded their life expectancy.
Right, and, and now, once we're starting to put heavier and heavier, uh, allowed loads and we're seeing more and more of it, ten years ago, we never saw too many cheaters on a tandem truck. Uh, but last year's paving crew had every truck they had was an SU five. I mean, and you see more and more of them, I see refined fuels with, a propane truck with a two, two, and one. Semi, uh, the concrete trucks with tandem axle, a cheater in the front and then the drop in the back, so that's a SU four or SU five right there. And, uh, we have them running all over and it's tied to our construction. We have either, uh, livestock facilities, grain bins, a lot of action out in the country in the summertime.
Is there such a thing as putting a, uh, sign out there with the tractor and the wagons limit?
Um, there's some that have tried that and the DOT frowns on anything that's a special sign, um, that would be considered non-standard. I did call and have the same discussion that I had with Office of Bridges and Structures, probably six or seven years ago, pulled the same file out and said, here, we have this problem in Ag County, Humble, Iowa. Has anything changed on posting to make this clearer? And, uh, the only thing changed is, uh, their recommendations to make it one of two and nothing, none of the multi-axle, um, uh, oh, like we've seen, printed out and showed you, uh, Washington or somewhere else, uh, out west where they were showing these massive signs, uh, I mean, where you have different pictures for different lots. Um, and then, then it comes down to, probably your next step would be to try to put some kind of axle rating on it. How many thousand pounds an axle? And that probably would catch us, the biggest one would be combine, especially if it's got a full hopper going down the road.
Well, I see we get a couple of threes and a five, what kind of vehicles can go across that? Merker Bridge, for example, the five, what can we drive across there legally?
Um, anything that's a light truck, a pickup, uh, one ton. You get much bigger than one ton, you'd be probably over to the ten.
That's really...
No skid loaders pulling behind the pickup, I mean, the skid loader we have is, uh, ten thousand, two hundred and fifty pounds. Uh, three ton is divine, or, uh, out here at Murray, I mean, three tons, uh, I think my pickup, last time I looked, was fifty-four hundred pounds, it's a half ton.
Yeah, we had school buses go across that for a while, till you get them to down.
Uh, school buses would make the twenty thousand, I think. Or the twenty tons, excuse me.
What are the feelings of the board on this?
For simplicity's sake, sounds to me like twenty, twenty's a good, good plan. I don't drive them that much a lot, somebody else decide that.
I think the easiest route would be go to twenty.
That's my opinion too. It's clearer.
And twenty ton is legal for, what, what's the biggest, the semi? No?
No.
Empty.
Empty.
My truck, empty, with full tank fuel is thirty thousand pounds, truck and trailer, that's fifteen ton.
Because lowering, making it standardized at twenty brings it down from what's the highest rating that, according to twenty-six, twenty-four, twenty-six, basically?
It'd be...
Dropping it just a little bit is what I'm saying.
Yeah, it's twenty-six is the one bridge which is structured, uh, and we could order the signs, Delana number seventy, we could order it for twenty-six thousand.
Really make that much difference though?
Uh, let's see, if I was driving down the road with a twenty thousand pound tractor and two five thousand pounds wagon, let's see, thirty thousand, I'd make it empty. Suppose I'm gonna do the math, yeah, I, yeah.
I mean, it really doesn't make that much difference.
Either you're, you're empty going across it and you can't go across it full.
Yeah, you're way over when you're full.
Yeah, well, really, kinda been significant between even the highest one at twenty-six down to standardize at twenty.
Yeah.
For that much. So then the next one, we kinda had the discussion, which one is, is it gonna really impact that people are gonna have to go around? Because some of these are dropping to forty-eight in a ton, which looks like...
Yeah, they're gonna drop from forty-eight to twenty-six.
Twenty.
To, to, to twenty.
Twenty-six or twenty make...
Doesn't make a whole lot of difference if you can't go over.
No, they're gonna drop from something they could go across to what they couldn't. So, and I'm sure Paul checked on that, what's your thoughts on which ones is that gonna impact the most, Paul, that, you know...
Because whoever uses the bridge, it's gonna impact a lot.
But, yeah, but I mean, where, in the grand scheme of this, would, you know, as you look through this, you see it, uh, you know, the higher traveled ones?
Anything spring and fall and even spring and tender is gonna get caught with this.
Yeah, it's, it's...
So, but you're saying virtually any of these structures could be, I'm just saying, is there any of these that are gonna catch more?
Well, the worst area is up there in, uh, Delana, 'cause there's, you know, two of them right close together on North South Roads.
And then the east-west is the twenty.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what we try to avoid with the five-year plan and, and one of those structures we did program, but it's not gonna happen instantaneously either.
Yeah.
Um, we pick areas to try to make sure we don't have a blackout like Bingo in the spot here. And that, that's starting to look like we're gonna get Bingo in the, in the area along Georgia and Hawaii and, in the Delana Township.
Yeah, don't get it munched up, so if there isn't any, I know that's...
Yeah, and, you know, it ain't bad if you only gotta go a mile or so out of your way.
Right.
But when you gotta start going forward.
That's right.
And the biggest thing we've tried to walk, watch in the future, is to make sure we don't end up with this on a bridge. Obviously, that's why the bridges get, uh, replaced sooner than, than some of these other routes where we have huge roads and we have some potential bottlenecks coming with bridges down the road too. But, uh, that's where we keep, uh, putting them on the priority poll and, and getting them replaced. We do have one of these, uh, that is on paved route and that is on C forty-eight and that would be T three and that, I think we can go back to, no, that's not T... Yeah, it is two, T three in Beaver Township. And that was posted, uh, one lane when I started and, uh, we were able to hire and do enough investigation to get that one lane posting off in the early two thousand two or three and now it's gonna go back to one lane again.
Yeah, such an narrow bugger anyway.
Yeah.
I mean, if you're going across with anything, any kind of a, you know, it's...
I don't like meeting people and I usually slow down just 'cause they're narrow.
Yeah.
So the one lane, really, I guess my question is, is there any other ones that could be, the one lane isn't gonna negate hitting it, dropping it down to that twenty to twenty-six?
No.
Uh, if we posted one lane, you can, it's not posted, it's posted one truck at a time, one legal truck at a time, whether it's an SU four, five, or six.
But it doesn't, that doesn't...
You can't meet another one or any other traffic at the time, that's just one lane.
But the one lane doesn't override twenty-six ton?
No, no, when it's posted for twenty-six ton, it's...
'Cause it still make, when you're looking at lowering the rating at twenty-six ton, it's twenty-six ton whether it's one lane or not.
Yeah.
I just wanna get my mind...
Well, and I wanna clear this up, 'cause I'm starting to get confused. If you look at T three, bridge number ten out in Norway, and, uh, any of those that are one lane, um, the only thing they're gonna be posted for is one lane, they were, that will otherwise be load unrestricted. If you're legal and you're the only vehicle on the bridge, you're legal. One lane infers one at a time, you're not meeting anybody, so you're not doubling up the road.
Right.
So those aren't twenty-six tons, those aren't anything, they're whatever you're legal to drive if it's one lane. So they aren't restricted unless you're meeting somebody. The rest of these are all restricted, um, they don't even fly at one lane.
That's the point.
Yeah.
That's the point, so you could put them one lane, but it doesn't mean it's still twenty-six, twenty-six.
Yeah.
Doesn't, can't up that by making it one lane.
Yeah.
So this is my question, if you make them twenty-four and in two years, they're down to twenty, then we got all the signs that we got posted. So are we better off to just shock it, the system, and do the twenty ton, or you wanna do the twenty-four?
Well, they say it does make a whole lot of difference when you're coming back empty, 'cause you're probably gonna be under the twenty ton. It's when you're loaded, and you're, when you're loaded, you're gonna be over the twenty-six ton.
That's the thing.
Unless you got, unless you got a hundred and fifty bushel wagon in there.
Nobody's gonna take a half load just so you can get across the town.
And odds are, you're correct, that if it's twenty now, two years or four years from now...
It'll be less.
I mean, we're gonna have more pile rot.
I mean, I say let's post them all at twenty and...
I mean, I think if you've got to lower them and it, there's no small, you know, most of them are twenty, twenty-six is the highest, twenty-three is twenty...
Yeah.
You don't gain anything.
You don't gain anything but the twenty-six ton.
Basically, you take that route empty, you can't take a pull at twenty-six.
Right.
Where, where that difference does apply is between three and five. And we have real active discussions, uh, uh, when we, uh, load rate a bridge at three or five ton, because there is a difference.
Yeah.
On three to five is to, what can go over it for just the size of the vehicle.
But between posting at twenty or twenty-four...
Doesn't make a whole lot of difference.
Doesn't gain, it doesn't gain anything.
Don't gain you a whole lot, no.
I'm gonna go ahead and post these at twenty ton.
All right, I have a first, can I get a second on the twenty ton posting?
Yeah, I'll second you.
Second by Dave.
Discussion.
Discussion.
That would be three, three at one lane traffic with the balance at twenty ton, correct?
You want, we'll bend the motion to that effect. Okay, Carl?
Yeah, that's fine.
Three then, Paul, the ones there?
Yeah, right here.
So you're amending to three, single lane, and the rest at twenty-five?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just, they'll be posted one lane traffic, three would be in the balance of, of these highlighted. You got this sheet, Peggy?
No, and I don't have a second on it.
Dave's second.
Dave's second.
I'm sorry, how, you never got one of these sheets, right? Okay?
Don't know if there wasn't enough in the packet, then...
Huh, I normally, six is standard procedure.
I got the dust control.
Oh, okay, yeah, we got part of it. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
Okay, now wait, we had to vote, uh, that was on the, no, you vote on the amendments and then you gotta vote on the original.
Okay.
So the amendment passed.
I need a vote on the original.
The original was just posted right then.
The original motion, I need a vote on that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
Okay, gotcha.
Thank you, Peggy.
It is confusing, I'll give you that, because, uh, and again, what we voted on the past is to try to keep it simple stupid and that's why we have most of the gross postings out there. Second order of the business is, uh, much simpler, approved dust control contractor for two thousand seventeen. We only had one quote submitted this year and it was from Pro Co-op for a dollar fifteen a foot. Pro's been our contractor on several occasions countywide before and most years has, uh, six to eight to a dozen of their own patrons that they permit independently of the county dust control contractor. But this year, Dino's did not submit and Edwards is out of the business, so...
How's that price look compared to last year's price?
Um, last year's, uh, Pro was, uh, we paid a dollar eleven to Dino's last year and Pro was a buck fifteen last year. Prior to that, it was, we went up, uh, from a dollar five, uh, dollar forty-three and thirteen when you couldn't find any.
Okay, so the price is reasonable.
Price is in the ballpark of what...
Yeah.
And what they do is, uh, we award, they'll send letters out, um, we'll get a list of people, uh, from the contractor, that, uh, we'll get all the roads ready at the same time and they generally shoot them over a two-day or three-day period. This is in lieu of a work in the right of way permit, because they'll submit us all of the insurance requirements, uh, as a contractor working in Humble County.
Okay.
I'd make the motion to accept Pro.
I have a first.
I'll second that, I'll second by Eric, any more discussion?
How many takers do you get, Paul? How many local people will buy it? Does it, ten, twelve, there's a lot?
Seventy, sixty, something like that, uh, and don't quote me, because I, we'll, we'll send a list, uh, out of what was sent last year and then, uh, and then, uh, they also have their list of a few and we go from there, so...
So the cemetery's paper, the owner, how do we do the...
How about Gosh Park, or not, Sheldon Park?
There you go. Start it up right away.
They have, uh...
Fire him up.
One of the local trucking companies brings all that stuff in for Pro, so it's kind of a win-win for us, 'cause our business is busy too, so...
Okay.
I, I don't do it, I haul grain. I wish I could.
Hold on, I have a first, I get a second, I did you, Eric had the second, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Last year when we voted on another company, then I got the phone call that I lost those loads, so...
Uh, otherwise, uh, we have a proposal out there from Blacktop Service for crack control. They had some openings, uh, this week. I've submitted it to you, uh, the price is, uh, two to three cents higher than what we did last year. We have numerous roads, I, I haven't finalized the review, but everything's been at least sealed at least once, routed and sealed. We would be doing some, uh, repeats and I think we'd start looking at some two thousand three and two thousand four initial fillings and we'd sing them loose on those routes, uh, obviously, we're... Obviously, we're not doing any routes that would be in the five-year program or something that's remotely close. But C twenty from Livermore to Bode, C twenty-six from Bode West to P twenty, P twenty from Addison to Bradgate Blacktop. The little loop going through Pioneer is an old loop, and I believe the high school blacktop going west is about a two thousand four, five the last time, so they already have ten years underneath them. And they'll, you'll drive them and see some new cracks, and you'll see some old separated cracks.
And that's something they kinda wanna get started on?
Well, that'd be, if they're, if they have a chance, I'd recommend that we allow them to go. Otherwise, we'll formalize something when the, when the time is appropriate.
Even though that's not technically on the agenda, but Paul did send out the information to everybody ahead of time. Can we work on that so it can move forward?
No, we can't.
Cannot for this one?
We can be verbal and go ahead and do it, bring it back later.
Yeah, I mean, you're...
Because I hate to hold them up, because it's like everything else, they gotta schedule, and if their schedule allows, and they need to be done...
They have ten days of nice weather or whatever.
Well, and... How many days of nice weather?
All I'm hoping, I'm thinking ten, but we'll stay with two.
But at any rate, to put down that... Can we move it forward, and then we overly approve it next week?
We'll look at it, we'll do whatever your wishes are.
I, I think, can we do that, Peggy?
You can give a consensus?
That's, I, I heard...
Give a formal approval of any kind of...
Yeah, I heard what I needed to hear, probably.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, we have one proposal, we have a contractor ready that's done business with us in the past.
Yeah, I mean, it's not like somebody new, and...
And if we had competing people or somebody, it might be a different story. But I'll see if their schedule still applies. They called me on this Thursday, and I got the phone message Thursday afternoon that they left at nine in the morning. Don't know why I didn't have it earlier.
It may be a formal thing before, after it rains, anyway, but at least I have the idea.
Uh, if you see crack control going, we'd be starting on it. We have budgeted for track control and pavement patching, I believe at a hundred and fifty thousand this year, and we have short twenty on it so far. But we do have asphalt patching that we may get done that would be paid out of there, that we're looking at, and Thor North could be done in this time period, so we're not gonna give them the whole load initially, anyway. Otherwise, I hope we can take a road tour here with a work session. It's gonna be more or less a visual review of Resolution two thousand six dash fourteen, which is our ditch cleaning policy. We have numerous requests to clean ditches right now, and I wanna show you what I see, and let you guys then discuss our current policy.
Yeah.
Because it's appropriate now.
Paul knew I had a big vehicle, you told me, Sarah, everyone else uses a van. It's sure available if you wanna go in one vehicle.
I hope we can.
I got seven seat belts, I think we get six batteries later.
Well, what are you insinuating, sir?
Me?
John, did you hear that, in case we did go to court?
I have heard that. I'm talking about myself.
Rock hauling, we started a little bit on Thursday, and we're starting to hit it in earnest now, because we've been doing well with the weather. We had, I held off rock hauling, and the roads were in reasonable shape. Been replacing delineators and broken signs from the winter and from, from being gone. Tree removals, we did a lot of cut and treat. We did a lot, been working over east with the head cutter and the rubber tire excavator. And even shot some tile repairs in last week, because it's not dry enough to do a lot, but some of these tile repairs were, were, were done, because it is...
We had a little discussion informally once about that tree shredder. Has that been slowed down, or we got that under control now? People griping because that tree was throwing all over the land. Anybody talk to you about that?
Uh, we, well, the use of the, you know, what size of... Oh, on what kinds, size they had to cut, I mean, it's six and smaller, we're not supposed to be a beaver.
That's right.
And, and I've lectured on that, and then if, as needed, I'll have to write something in post. But, no, we ran the east side of the river and then cleared over east for a few spots where there, Danny Lippold is using it now, trying to keep it moving, but at some point, once we get a lot of leaves, we'll probably be done.
Also, there was a report that we were out by the trails above Thodens, well, they checked into that. It wasn't us out by the trails, it was the power company out, and they have the ability to tear stuff up because of its by their power lines.
We got accused of something we didn't do.
Yeah, we got accused of being in the trail area, that's, so that went off our plate when they, Midland, or Mid-America, or whoever, whatever mid was on it, they did it, not us, so...
I hadn't heard that.
Well, I hadn't talked to you yet, but...
Okay, I'll see you. I don't even know what you got left, but we'll be ready when you get out there.
Close session.
And we'll take a loop, we'll see a lot of different things, and mainly ditch cleaning, but there's other things that, hey, remember that on the way, and this and that. Be a lot of pointing and waving and driving. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, thanks, Paul. Okay, uh... Are you here for the closed session, John? All righty.
I make the motion to go into closed session, is the, the code twenty-one point five?
I have a motion to go in closed session. Second by Dave, all in favor?
Aye.
We're in closed session.
Well, we have the earlier, the newer version last week.
Yeah, much younger than the last week.